Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the council meeting, Nelson City Council Meeting, November the 14th, 2022. Thank you all for being here. If you don't mind, let's have a word prayer. Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we just ask that you would be with the leaders here tonight. Lord, lead us guys and direct us to make good decisions for our community, Lord. Be with our servicemen, our policemen, our EMTs and firefighters, Father God, and keep them safe. We just ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pray that agents could apply and have a safe environment and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a will of duty and justice for all.
I have to swear again. I have to say my name for Ms. Kristen McNeil. Please turn it over to you.
Ms. McNeil?
Yeah.
We're going to swear at you.
Okay.
If you're ready, if you will raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city and that you will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America?
Okay.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome. First order of business tonight will be agenda approval. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
James, can I get a second?
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? You now, thank you. Okay, public appearance. Do we have anybody this evening that would like to... Has anything they'd like to say regarding the agenda for this evening? Okay, we'll move on to number seven. Approval of the minutes for October the 3rd, 2022. Can I get a... Can I get a motion to approve the October the 3rd, 2022 minutes?
I'll make a motion to be approved.
William Taylor, can I get a second?
I'll second.
James, all in favor? You now, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the November the 10th, 2022 town hall meeting? Okay, thank you, William Taylor.
No, I'll take it.
James, all in favor? You now. Number eight, department reports. Lieutenant Downey, would you like to come and share with us?
We had no reportable crimes in the city for the Cherokee side, so that's good. But here coming up, we're going to have Black Friday shopping. Everybody's going to be shopping for Christmas. Sam's going to be getting his gifts ready. We need to make sure that people, a lot of times, leave them in their trunks and in their cars where they're visible. They buy gifts for the family members and things like that. Make sure to lock your cars. Don't give people an excuse to knock the window out. Pass this throughout your... Where you guys live and your neighborhoods and things like that. That'll just help prevent any crimes for December because that's the worst thing is to have some gifts stolen out of your car that can use for your hard-earned money. So I just want to encourage everybody to keep your doors locked. Keep those gifts in the trunk. That way, they can't be seen. Burn your valuables from outside to the end zone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is mayor reports. First thing up is the December date, the 5th. Can we get that motion to change that to the 12th due to the election runoff? So is everybody good with that? Moving that December meeting to the 12th?
Yes.
I'll make a motion and move it to the 12th.
I'll second.
James, all in favor? Good deal. Christmas open house for this year. We're trying to just... We're never seeing that we need to do it. Is it... Okay, yeah, we can talk... We'll do that. But I can talk for them. We'll do that in just a second. The Christmas open house. This year, we'd like to do a little bit different. Still have Santa Claus, but just do maybe some hot chocolate and like some cookies and cake for the kids. Do you guys have a date that's better for you? Look at my calendar. So we've got the 3rd, the 10th, and 17th. I think if we get much into... Into later on, if we do it the second week, it's going to rain because it always does every year. It rains every year on the second weekend in December. But if you guys want to do it from 1 to 3, maybe on the 3rd, Saturday, the 3rd? Anybody, are you available?
I think so. We're going to do it here.
Yes, here. Yeah, it's just going to be... We're just going to do something really light this year and just do, like I said, just Santa. And then just do some cake and some hot chocolate for the kids. And just do it like an open house. Bring your kids by to see Santa. Okay. So 1, 3 on December the 3rd. And then our annual Christmas dinner for the council. Do you guys have a preference for that? Does a date work better for everybody? Weekend date, weekday, weeknight? I mean, it's up to you.
I go home after work every day.
I work from home every day. Anne, would you rather it be lunch versus... Do a lunch versus a dinner? So that's something else you think about. And if you guys want to check with your families and just text us Matt and let us know what date works better for you? I know we're getting into the end of, you know, we got Thanksgiving and then you really only have three weeks before Christmas hits. So I could tie off with you guys and get a time later if that's a thing. All right. The next thing is the Nelson drain pipe drainage issues. Kelsey, I know you... I'm going to let you talk about this because you've been in contact with the...
It's under item 8. Steve Rawson had sent an email update that he went through and checked all the drains in town. There were some he went ahead and cleared out on the spot. And some he said would need, I guess, some tools and stuff, whatever. Sylvia and I looked over it the other day and she said, just to go ahead and approve the email to tell him to go ahead and get it fixed. So it was just basically an update, stuff that he had noticed needed to be done.
Yeah, we already... The council already approved it last year, but he's just now getting out here to it. I knew this was a priority. Yeah, so this is what we're going to do. So you guys want to go through those Habersham Way storm drain? And you have any extra on that one? Just leaves backing it up. He shoveled it out and cleared the perverties.
Yeah.
Blue Ridge Storm Drain Inlet is clear. North Avenue driveway pipe at 112 and 164 stopped up. It needs to be opened up so the water can flow through the pipe as designed. Water can't flow through, therefore jumps the pipe and flows out onto the street and the driveway. So he's got to do that one. And then Winding Street. The driveway pipe at address 50, Winding Street appears to be partially collapsed, limiting the water flow. So he'll do that one. Do we have a date when he's going to come back out? We just...
He can't respond.
Okay. And then intersection of Water Street, North Avenue. At the stop sign, the pipe appears to be stopped up, restricting the water ability to properly flow. Cherokee Avenue and Hillside, clean the inlet so water can properly drain into the structure. And with that said, have we heard back from the surveying people for the place to...
I think they've already flagged and stuff up there. I just need an official, like we have the tax approval that was okay, but I need an official date on that, which I'm in here.
Okay.
There's already flags and stuff up there.
Good deal.
As a lot of this stuff, Ricky and I need to keep a check on what the end goal is.
Yeah.
And keep them playing that. How about an update on walking trail?
He's... He got pulled up on another job and he'll be back. He's going to just do that small area that went to the pavilion.
He's going to go through the charge?
Yeah, just to the pavilion area.
And there needs to be some states added to the borders we walked through. I walked through a day of about 12 or 14 places which already came loose and were losing.
We don't need to get back. Probably need a chance. Walk through with him because I didn't put those crossings in and the way he's done them, they're probably not going to last. Pipes need to be... I'm not sure if he...
The pipes weren't part of the estimate. That was just stuff that he had kind of noticed and he'd thrown in just to kind of correct stuff, but it wasn't part of our bid stuff.
Well, we'll have to do something to correct them. Those are going to be away. They've already started.
Yeah.
Pipes, right? So I kind of wonder if he was hands-on on doing them because it doesn't look like his normal type of ones. Whenever he comes back, we probably need to try to get a couple of us to walk with him. Show him what needs to be done, punch it out.
Reach out to him and get him to find out when he's going to come back. Any questions on this... On the Nelson drain, drain stuff here, other than...
He's going to replace pipes if necessary in places.
Yeah.
Can we give our hope and support a debt and see if they can do any... Like cross off anything they can do on it?
What they did here was they tried to blow through it, from my understanding, to make sure that it wasn't partially collapsed. Everything else that's on here is stuff that's going to require that. North Avenue needed to be opened up so the water in the pipe could be drained. And the problem with that was it's going to... When we talked to Ricky, it's going to be blown out. And we don't have the tools to do that. Like blow the pipe out?
We used to blow them out with a fire truck.
Yeah. We don't do that anymore. And then the pipe at Winding Street appears to be partially collapsed. We can't do that one either. Intersection at Water Street, the pipe appears to be stopped up, restricting the water. Again, that was probably going to blow it out too. People were shoving all kinds of stuff in those pipes.
Lot of paper racks, your legs and ditches and then there.
Well, this one over here, when they cleaned the one out here on Spring Street, there was bicycle, little bicycles and all kinds of stuff in it. Yeah, it's a hole. There was never going to blow. It was going to be dug out. And then we can have them check... We can have them check the Cherokee one, Kelsey. Have Ricky check that one and see if that's something that can be done. That's... I believe that's the move.
Like grayed up around it?
Yeah, I have them check it a few times with that one.
Yeah, have them check that one and see if it can... See if it's just... If there's anything we can do or if it's going to be blown out. Any questions about the stuffing? Miranda, I'm going to turn it over to you for some answers for work.
Okay. All right, we'll go over bank balances first. General fund, this is as of February 7th, as well as my report. My expenditure report's going to be the end of October. Balances will be like that. Let's see, general fund, $917,120. SLOSS 4 is $274,102. SLOSS 2, which is the Pickens, the older Pickens SLOSS, is $335,684. SLOSS 5, which is the new Cherokee, $638,889. Cash reserve is $167,460. Once we get the audit back on that, we'll end up doing a transfer from... To that cash reserve based off that policy we have. Pickens SLOSS 2020, which is the newer one, $621,325. And then the CARES grant, we have $252,270. Right now, at the end of October, our overall expenditures are at $110,317. That's the ending of the fourth month of the year, which should be 65% or more, and we're sitting at 82% remaining. Other than that, that's all I have.
What is our audit?
They improved their... It's right in the...
Right after the... Of Thanksgiving.
They probably... It's probably after all this, but I don't know if that's...
We don't have one of those.
I don't have a time to communicate with Cherokee. So did you just run the report?
Yeah. But this is ending October.
We want to ask them about that. She said we have a letter from her. I have a similar from her.
We did prepare a set back.
Unfinished business. Yeah, Jeff, city-owned property lot at Pickens Street. We're going to have some information for us.
So I didn't look into that. Here's my conclusion on it. If anybody but you owned it, I think it would be a non-conforming lot. You could do whatever you wanted with it based on our ordinance. Since the city is the owner of it and if the city wanted to try to dispose of it here and didn't want it to be available for... To become a residential lot again, what I think you could do is vote that it not be considered a non-conforming lot and then sell it with that understanding that would be part of the bid advertisement that has been declared to not be a non-conforming lot. Meaning it could not, you know, it would have to comply with city regulations. If you wanted to do that, that's how you would do it. And then I think you would put that in a deed as well so nobody ever has a question about whether, you know...
Would like bail on it or not.
Correct. And I think you have that option because you're the owner of it. You can declare that it's not... That it doesn't have that status anymore.
You have to find out how big it is.
I think it's quarter inch or four inches plus minus. The people that inquire about it are the ones that own property next to it. So I honestly think whoever ended up purchasing it would be one of those to enlarge those parcels. So that would be my best guess.
So if it's a non-conforming, just hypothetically, if it's non-conforming lot, and one of the neighbors bought it and they wanted to put a... It's not... It's... What kind of building is that called?
Like an accessory.
Accessory building. Would that be... Could they do that? As long as there's no bathrooms or anything like that? Say they want to build a garage?
Well, then it would still just have to comply with our setback requirements, et cetera.
Just wouldn't be able to build a house?
Or they'd be considered... They would be able to consider it part of their larger property. They could even combine the tax parcels if they wanted to. But our setbacks would still apply.
We couldn't bail it as a living space.
It's sort of non-residential. Only if you're otherwise allowed to under our ordinance. And I don't know what we've got on accessory uses or carriage houses or detached garages. I mean, that might be an option for somebody, but it would have to be part of their larger lot. It would still have to fit within whatever our dimensional requirements are.
It has to be on the side. There's a...
Right, so it would have to comply with all those rules.
And you said to do that, we would need to... We would need to redo the deed?
Well, I mean, if you... You'd probably only do this if you're going to dispose of it, right? Because otherwise, why bother? If you decide that you want to put it out for bid to see if anybody wants to purchase it, I think you first just need to, right at the same time that you vote to do that, vote to declare that it is no longer a non-conforming lot.
And it'd be written up like in the ad in the bid form or whatever. So if someone bids...
Yeah, to make sure it's real clear.
Yeah, so when someone bids on it, then they're not going to be building on it.
Right. It would be subject to... And we say, this lot is subject to all requirements of our existing ordinance.
Yeah.
It is not... It's no longer a non-conforming lot, so it's subject to all our normal requirements. So if you decided you wanted to try to sell it, you just can put that on an agenda and do it all.
Subject to all conforming?
Senator Zomsky, do we have a minimum square foot for a lot?
You do, depending on whether it's R40 or R20. On that side of the road, it's R20, which is basically a half an acre. And that lot existed prior to the adoption and zoning of the 1984...
There's going to be a way to make it conform.
Yeah, no. It's... I mean, technically, it exists. It's if the city doesn't put the parameters on it. Someone, in theory, could build on it. But the people that are asking about it are not the ones that would be... They're just wanting basically to expand. And the one specifically that's asked about it is the one that we were doing in Marsha and its mom's house. I've been part of that several times. And I've had a couple others that...
All the Jackson landowners would be able to bid on it. I mean, it could have been...
Yeah, but we just can't specifically sell it to them. It has to be open to anyone and everyone.
Yeah, we need to sit down. I just... We've got to sit down. I want to get you to sit.
I don't think we can do that.
The bid process, if you just review the bids and decide whether to... You don't have to accept even the highest one. You can decide to reject all the bids.
Choose which one to choose.
With that much restriction on it, somebody will come in and bid $5 and maybe the only...
Well, you don't have to take it. You don't have to do it.
I understand that, yeah. Y'all would just vote on it? And once you reviewed the bids, you would decide whether to accept it or not?
But in theory, the city's also been sitting on it since, what, like 2003?
Right.
I think so. We're also maintaining it. We're... It's...
We have to take it on scale as a crackdown.
Yeah. So it's costing us money.
Turn down the old ways to do it.
Yeah, and it's a liability for us at this point, so...
Okay. Do we want to vote? Do we want to vote for that? Or do you guys want to think about it and put it on the agenda for next?
Okay, I'll put it on the next agenda, huh?
Well, I mean, it's on here. If you knew what you wanted to do with it, you could vote on it.
I haven't even looked at it. I'd like no exact size of it. But anyway, does it show it in a plaque with the size of it or anything?
I can put it on key public. And then they...
Yeah, the county order. County has it at like a third of an acre roughly, but I don't know how accurate that is.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, you could put a house on it. But again, that goes back to environmental health. And any time somebody comes in, they're immediately hurt back to them and...
Oh, if you give them all cash, they're not going to have a house.
Oh, I get... But it's environmental health. It's not... We have no control over any of that stuff.
See, it isn't.
But there was a house there.
Yeah, so the way that that works is if you had a house that was... That was previously had a house there and you sold the lot as is, they could go back to the... Help the county. Or is it the state that's got SNES? And then they would determine what size house could go back on that lot, what the footprint would be. If it would be a one-bedroom with one bath or two-bedrooms with one bath, whatever. If you decide that you don't want to do that, according to Jeff, you're going to vote to dispose of the property. Then you're going to vote to declare it as a non-conforming lot, which is non-buildable, that's subject to all of our conforming ordinances and so on.
That's what I have to do.
Do you want... Do you all want to vote that now so we can go ahead and get that going? Or do you want to wait until next December?
I'd like to next year.
Okay.
I'd like to go with our policy.
Okay, go ahead and put it on for December. And is everybody comfortable with voting for... Well, you decide at the time.
Just table it December.
Yeah, just table it December and then we can decide. So, all right. Moving on to number 10, survey drainage project. Okay, so the survey. This one here is, we need an official vote. This is the one where we send it out to you guys and because we need to get on the schedule.
This is the one that varies company that they normally use. Couldn't... Like they're just not responding back. So he asked to reuse. So this is the company the city normally uses for survey stuff. So we contacted them. They sent the estimate back to him. So he just said, if we don't want to pass through charge, we could approve it to save us some money. But we just need an official vote on it.
So that's a total... The total was $9,280 to Cherokee Survey Company, Inc. But can I get a motion to approve the survey for $9,280?
I'll make a motion to approve $9,280 for Cherokee Survey. I'll second if you grant it, Roger.
Okay, David. James? All in favor? You now, thank you. Next is vacation time for employees. Okay.
That's just the policy stuff. The...
This is... Want to talk about the line up? Our third day is off. Did you have any of that information? We're talking about the county.
That's what I would probably say for it.
Okay.
Because this is like sharing it. Currently, like the sick leave rolls that the vacation time does not roll in our company last week. But which really should be off.
So when this was done, it showed the sick leave's roll, vacation time is not. So what should happen? I would say this is what I've seen corporate everywhere else is. And Miranda, I don't know about you guys. You're with Sheriff's Department, but sick days, if you use them, you use them or lose them. Your vacation days, you should be able to roll over at least one week.
Well, a lot of places do let you roll your sick days too. We have a cap on our sick days. After you've reached that limit, then they start falling off. But for the most part, the two weeks is what we roll over vacation time.
Okay.
Well, you can't just use sick time. You're supposed to be sick when you use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I think you can use it...
But they're rolling it over versus...
Where I work, sick rolls over and you got to use your vacation. That's how the...
Yours? Mine?
When you know, like, the limit on sick, like, you just keep saying nothing?
I mean, you got to be sick to use it. So I mean, you can't just take three weeks off without a doctor's.
Yeah, I think it's like so many days here before it has to be free.
We can't still roll over any vacation time.
Only problem that we have with that and why I would advocate for having... Being able to at least roll over one week is because we don't have staff. So sometimes it's just not convenient for somebody to take off two weeks at a time, right? Or we have different things coming up and they can't get... They can't use all their vacation.
One company was, you could roll over a week, but you had to use it in the first quarter.
Yeah. I think they actually do that. It's going to be easy in the first two months or something like that.
But not the city.
There's a lot of different ways you can do it.
Yeah. I think Cherokee had it where they'd let you roll some of it and then some of it had gone into like a retirement thing or something. You could have... A lot of times, you could accrue it into a retirement thing.
The sick, that's how we do it. Vacation, you can't roll over 320 hours, I think.
Yeah.
Because not every employee... Not every employee's the same. You got employees that's only been here six months. They might only have a half a week of vacation, depending on how you all do it.
Yeah. But you don't want to let... You don't want to get into having a front line too much over. Because that's a five-year worth of for the city financial.
You have to pay it, yeah.
Exactly. There has to be a cap. Or one is the same thing.
So do you guys want to just continue to be able to roll it over? Do we want to have a cap on sick days? I mean, we don't pay it out when a person leaves.
Sick doesn't get paid out. Sick is allowed to roll, but it doesn't get paid out.
Yeah.
Vacation gets paid out, but it doesn't roll.
It looks like you got a cap on the sick leave of 59 days.
Yeah.
59 days.
It does have a cap on it. It doesn't give out that.
How many sick days do y'all get in your...
Sick is seven days.
Seven. Seven, 10 vacation.
10 up to, I think Ricky and I are 15 now.
After three years.
Yeah, it's 15. When it's like a sick schedule, a lot of times we'll do, like if I have a doctor's appointment, I'll just use hours. Like if I'm running down, because there's no point in me taking an entire day if I have a doctor's appointment or something stupid. You know, what's the point in taking an entire day?
What are y'all suggesting?
So should just in being able to roll, just be able to roll over a week's worth of vacation?
Just see if somebody can roll so that somebody doesn't lose it.
Roll over one week?
Yeah, just roll instead of, instead of losing.
I would say I think it needs to, because you're right, you're limited on staff, so. And do you want to put a time period that has to be used in or do you?
Well, if you can only roll over one week, I mean.
Then you're going to gain two more weeks. And then at the end of the year, if you've not used it in three weeks.
The ability to roll over one week and it be used in the first quarter, that gives them, that gives them, yeah, pretty much to use it.
I mean, that's what y'all, it sounds fine to me, but.
I, I think it's good. I mean, at least they're not losing it. Everybody good with that, David?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to, to update our annual leave in our policy book to roll over one week to be used in the first quarter?
First quarter of the new year?
New year. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'm making a motion to approve that.
Okay. And can I get a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? The other thing is, is the city observes holidays for 2022. So right now we're at nine, right, Kelsey?
Cherokee's 12, but that does include the 12.
So which ones are we not like passing?
They're not doing one after Thanksgiving. It's moving April. Well, honestly, a lot of our stuff kind of winds up with the stuff in Pickens.
Yeah, it does.
I think the school does like 10 or 12. I remember.
Yeah.
So we've got New Year's Day.
I think it's Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving is the one that usually has a ban.
Good Friday is on May, that's the.
It's sometime in April usually.
It's the Friday of the Thursday usually.
We've got laws account.
It's a state holiday is what it is. And then a state holiday is the Friday.
The number of the 22?
Yeah.
The day after Thanksgiving? Okay. So what we're proposing to be more aligned with, with the counties, the surrounding counties, is adding Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving off. And it's more of an employer retention thing than it is anything else. We don't give our employees much of any, you know, we don't have anything else for them. So Kelsey's here, but there's, she can't contact either one of the counties. Nobody's working. So, yeah, so. Adding the two days would give us a total of 11 paid holidays for, for the employees if we add a Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving. So are you guys okay with that? Can I get a motion to approve adding Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving to our Nelson, city observed holidays?
I'll make a motion.
James, can I get a second? David, all in favor? And can I get a motion to adjourn?
We have the rest of it in motion.
We need a motion to adjourn?
After I've waited, get your own.
I need a second, James, and all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys.